A work session that is in preparation for our recess meeting of October the 15th. Today's October the 11th. It is 1:15 and we will be taking up our agenda for Tuesday's meeting. But prior to that, we have a presentation by Mr. Kemp and perhaps Mr. Forrester, I don't know, the utilities department, going to give us an update on the projects, Pleasant Acres project and an idea of the go forward on the Green Oaks project. So, Mr. Kemp, if you would like to take it from here.
Good deal, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Kemp and Board. As we talked probably a little over about a year and a half ago, we started looking at infrastructure as a whole problem we were having, just don't reoccur. And an issue was made to try to wholesale or basically really aggressively start trying to do some replacements. And through that process, we started looking at where are some of the real problem areas when you look at whole neighborhoods? And so through that process, Pleasant Acres came up to the top and it was based on the number of calls and repeat visits and stuff on that area. And we'll talk about other areas in the town, but this is kind of where we started because we all did also identify needs as a neighborhood, I'd say, in Green Oaks as well as Roland Hills. So those two or three we've talked about. We also recognize there are a lot of issues in the community outside of full neighborhoods and talk maybe a little bit about that if you're interested. But I think that this is really a good start. This is Pleasant Acres and if you look at the bottom of that sign, it says it was established in 1954. So it is one of the older neighborhoods and clearly had some issues with relations to the utilities water and sewer. This is a slide we used years back. I mean, I say years back, it feels like maybe a few months ago when we started the project. That kind of gives you an overview, it's hard to see, but you see blue lines, water lines, green lines, sewer lines, but it really kind of shows you what Pleasant Acres was located. It involves almost 100 homes and so the intent on our project was to go in and change all of that out, replace all the water and all the sewers. So that was our objective as we went forward. Any project like this, I think, and if we go forward, I think you're really involved with community communications. And I just stress this because we worked real hard at that. Y'all were very supportive of that, so it's kind of an effort to kind of tell people what we're trying to do and get them engaged in that. I put two shots up here, one kind of where we kicked it off, which was August the 14th of last year. That was kind of the first meeting. We had our game plan together and it was kind of a formal get started. We did a follow-up, July the 30th, and we hope to have one in a month or two, is to kind of finalize. The middle section kind of gives you a snapshot of some of the things we did on a somewhat regular basis. We were very, I think it really helped us in getting email addressed and we set up a separate account where we communicated directly with those individual homeowners and residences. And we got a lot of feedback, a lot of questions, but that's what it was for. And through that, it's just, I'll give you a couple of examples of kind of what we did as we continued to update on progress. We won't do a lot of this, but I think everybody's talking about this year. But rain did have a factor as well, we are where we are today. I think it was real interesting when we looked, when we kind of kicked the project off, it was kind of back in October, we had started, hoped to start in October, then we began in November. And so from November till now, it's been extremely wet. But here again, all the way over to the end in September, which is where we just finished, it's hard even to find a blue line on that, so we just didn't operate. Thought I show you a few pictures. This is a process of what we actually were pouring in the water lines. About 7,400 linear feet of both water line and sewer was installed in this project. And this is an example of when they were doing it and you see mud around it now. Kind of an example of the sewer line, we were laying sewer. And this project really did two things, it replaced it, but we also enhanced it a little bit because we actually had some places we wore the line, which again makes it better for the long term. But here again, just an example and you'll notice some of the wood and some of the process of what we went through.
Did we upsize any lines?
We did. We actually did on sewer and we changed some of the man huddles so that we got rid of some of what called junior, the small man huddles and kind of finding that, so that was another problem when we tried to address. This picture's in here just to kind of give you the example. When you think about just digging a ditch, it's hard to see, but if you'll see, at the bottom, there's two little orange, that's communication line. At the top is a water line and then on the side over here is the sewer line. So as they were digging, you have to work around all of that other stuff. So here again, a lot of the, I think some of the contractors, they worried when they say this is going to be a hard project just because of course under the ground. So I thought it's something first always remember, it's hard to see. Trees, we had a few issues with that and this is just an example of when we had to bring a crane in and lift those out of it. We were successful in minimizing that amount of work, but like on any large project, we did have some of that that occurred. It started, finally started drying up a little bit, so I showed you an example of mud and here's what it's looking like in that, through some of the neighborhoods and you'll see some of the blood pipe, that's water, man holes installed and so it looks much better there. And there's kind of an example not too long ago where we actually cleaned everything up. So that one, water and sewers installed, as you'll notice something really, we got a little grating to do and then we have grass to put back, which is good on the way. So where are we today? We're almost through. We're going to complete, we are planning and hopefully we'll complete all the main line installation and testing. That would be our pressure test on our water and our sewer. We hope to have all that completed within a couple of weeks. It will start right then, making final connections for all the houses and, you know, if things go well, that'll probably take a week or two more. So it kind of gives you a feel for when we'll all be connected. There's a couple of areas in town, Lindley Avenue was one we talked about. We are hoping, we've already got things lined up to do an overlay, a repair of Lindley Avenue and we've got several road cuts throughout the neighborhoods, we'll be putting asphalt on top of that, so.
Lindley was our staging area for the most part.
It was our staging. And that was kind of back and forth and so that will be a complete overlay and then we're going to do all the road cuts. I think in talking with Edgerton Engineering, Howard, it's going to be overlaid next year. So when this is all done, basically, I think that neighborhood will be in real good shape, electric, water, sewer and some trees. Right ways are going to still repair some and we're working with individual neighbors and then the last one is yours to be reestablished with rent and cover. Talking with the contractor, he's still optimistic. He still feels real good, there's a good chance that we'll be able to spring this fall, but if not, they're under contract to make sure that we get it back in place. But hopefully if we can get a good start this fall, that would be really a good deal. So those are kind of, hopefully in the next 30 days, we'll be pretty much down to the real, the final work and then we'll be working on that for a few months ago, then we'll be through with Pleasant Acres. I want to just go back and point out too that the neighbors have really been supportive.
Well, and that's where I wanted you to tell, how we stay in contact with them, send them monthly emails and that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, and that was what I was saying earlier on that, we talked about these little newsletters right here and I was talking to Vincent when he sent some of these pictures together. I think he's visited every person in Pleasant Acres. And so we've got a list, we've maintained that list of people when they would call in and say, "What's the question?", we'd go respond and so I think that's that communication. People need to understand what was fixing to happen and the contractors really work hard to not surprise people. You know, occasionally we'll have a bump in the road, but all in all, I'd say we were real successful in that. And like I said, it's a general rule, the people in the communities seem very appreciative and understanding, so knew where we were heading. I think this is going to be so much better along with this method, is what we would hope to do as we go along the other ones, similar to our presentation going forward.
Yes, and that was what I wanted you to highlight, is how we kept in contact and the fact you've had three meetings and we use that same pattern going to other locations. And also, the comments that I have gotten from people as we've gone along have been very positive. There's only been a couple of instances when someone felt like they hadn't been touched often enough. And so I think in terms of the order of magnitude of this job, y'all have done a masterful job of keeping people in the loop and understanding what we're doing and that makes all the difference in the world whether or not you're going to have a successful project, so.
Thank you. And we've learned a lot in this.
Sure.
This was the first time, so you never take an opportunity to learn something and you make time to make it look better the last time. You know, you're talking about getting in contact with persons and how to do it in a more effective way, so we're going to try and incorporate that.
And I know you've still got more work to do. Do you have plans, and I'm assuming it's probably Vincent that would be the person that is doing that, to go back through and do that final punch list and one last touch with the neighbors to be sure that things are where we think they ought to be?
Yes, you know, we've got a big list and we keep tracking it until it's punched off, we'll be through. And I like these two community meetings, we almost envision another one.
That's what I'm wondering.
When we get everybody connected and then we're down to maybe the grass or something like that, just here again, to make sure if people have a question, we'll be handling all the rest, but it's one of those things that even in another 30, 60 days, there'll probably be issues that we'll be dealing with in the spring as well.
Right.
But the majority gets better.
And it's probably too early to know if you're having a drop in the number of repairs you're having to do or the number of repairs.
Yes, when it comes in, we would, we have inspected it real well and I've had our inspector on the back as well, you know, y'all, we did that as well. He's out there every day, so that's one of those things. So maybe that's what you're asking.
I think what I'm asking is just, I know y'all had gotten tons of calls where you needed repairs before this project started. Is it too early to tell that that number has dropped off and the number of repairs?
Hopefully we've got no repairs up there, haven't we?
This one, this is not really connected right now.
So it's too early, so it's too early.
They won't really be officially connected, water and sewer, probably for another 30 to 60 days.
Okay.
But I'm like the mayor, if we have failure now, we're going to be looking for construction defect or something like that.
Right.
So what bred us to this, we had probably over 40 water leaks, we had probably more than that backed sewer over a couple of years. And so that's how we decided this was where it was, just to your point, was tracking all of that.
Right.
So, no, we put this in and fully expect not to have any issues.
I heard we don't have any for a number of years.
Now, do you have problems between the house and the connection point?
Yeah, sure.
There very likely could be some of those because we stop at the meter and we stop at where our sewer tabs are, so that may have to, that's an individual person. Just briefly, because we talked earlier, these are who we are in Pleasant Acres and I just want to point on that too, we started doing that budget and although we're behind, just to note, if y'all didn't fit, we're in that budget.
Excellent.
So we're working every day to make sure that we get what we want, although we stretched the days a little bit, so that's important. Green Oaks is the next one. We have been working in Green Oaks several months when we started this, kind of preliminary investigation. We signed a work order, task order with Garm, really going to be working on permacore. We really do a deep dive into that, finalize, gather the information so that we can develop plans and have something to advertise come spring. So that's kind of our game plan. I gave you a snapshot of what Green Oaks looks like. I know when we first started, we kind of broke it into four sections. Right now, based on where we are, we're optimistic. We hope this holds out, that we maybe do some lining so our sewer may not be totally replacements, that we may be able to use some of that, the water will be all replaced in that. So we kind of broke it steady line around the north phase, the north section is where we're starting. And I put those other, just for the neighborhood here again, not to surprise, but they'll be seeing a lot more activity in that neighborhood with that, so with those vehicles.
What's your breakpoint in the north? Douglas MacArthur or?
Douglas MacArthur. If you drive down that street, that's probably the divide line.
Okay.
And we're going to be focusing on the fall.
Okay.
So that's where we are. And then once, like I said, by spring, we'll be bringing it to the board for consideration, going forward with construction so we can be ready to start when the construction starts. I mentioned Roland Hills because we sat down with him earlier. We're doing investigation work there as well and depending on this flows in, there's some activity that we'll be doing in a little few days. There are also some issues, this is the big project, these are the neighborhood projects that we're working on. But every area in the city, they've got a moderate shoe or some bigger sewer problem in other neighborhoods. And we're hoping our plan is to try to deal with those in conjunction with this. So it's not wood and all that to the majority.
Okay. When do you plan on holding your first Green Oaks neighborhood meeting?
We'd like to get just a little more investigation.
Okay.
So we know exactly what we've got in the ground. One, that's going to be permacore, that we're doing that with Garmber and then hopefully maybe right after Christmas.
Okay, so maybe January? Okay. And we've been on Next Door, we've, excuse me, we've told them that we're in the neighborhood, right, on Next Door? Did we not?
And they're knocking on doors, we might go to somebody because they say, "We need to inspect the man hole, we need to come back and do that." That's what they're in the process of.
Okay, alright.
And but, and right now, like you said, we're trying to get the word out and then we get all the information together so we can tell them more than we're trying, we're starting there and be good to have another group meeting.
Okay, alright, great.
And I'll say this thing though, although we targeted on the north side, when we actually get into a bit of plans, that may change a little bit just because of construction schedules and prices, it may break into different pieces as we get into it. This is our study here.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions with Mr. Kemp? Okay, thank you very much. Y'all should be very proud of that project.
I think so. I think the city's going to be well served for a long, long time for this and it's just with the process, I think it's great to have started.
Yeah.
It takes some more time.
Yeah, absolutely, but it really is, y'all have done a great job, so, alright. Okay, well, let's move into the agenda and I don't think we have anything huge on here. Has Mr., and Mr. Latimer is not here, he is traveling to a soccer tournament for his daughter, I believe, this weekend. Has he looked at those minutes and given you?
Yes.
Okay, any issues with putting the two sets of minutes on consent?
Leave 17 minutes on.
Leave the 17th off, okay. Alright, and that'll give us the 27th, that's the work session. Alright, I've got four new police officers, which I had the pleasure of swearing in today, who will be introduced on Tuesday. Do we know of anything else that we need to put in the, on the agenda for documentation purposes? Nothing? Okay. We have no public appearances, we're going to have a public hearing, this will be our second public hearing on the place type map amendments that Daniel presented last time and this will be not only the public hearing, but it's also the consideration for adoption of it, so. And then we will follow that with the conditional use for, what is it, it's the Lynn Lane and South Montgomery, conditional use for a public hearing consideration. And then public hearing consideration on the Brooksville Gardens, which is the, that section that was burned out. We had, after we did this last time, their attorney came forward and talked to us after the board meeting, but he has not been back in communication, so we are proceeding, proceeding with this for the Brooksville Garden unit. Under mayor's business, this is, this is something that came to my attention, I think there were a couple of newspaper articles from Jackson and maybe from somewhere else that talked about the Mississippi code does not allow dogs on patios. And we have, for those of you who know, go out and eat, like I do all the time, we've got a number of restaurants, City Bagel was one and of course they're now closed, but The Grill, 929, Ben 612, any number of restaurants around town, Camp House, that allow dogs on patios. And I'm not happy that they're not allowed to do that and I'm not happy that they're then in, out of compliance with the state code. And so I mentioned it to Representative Robertson and Representative Taylor and both of them were very amenable to us going forward and asking for a local private, local and private on this. I also mentioned it to the folks at MML, Sherry Vizi at MML, and she too said that that was something that MML might be willing to support. And we have a letter in your packet, when you get your e-packet, from the local restaurants who said that they would be supportive of doing this because they're the ones who are currently participating in it. So, and it is totally at the restaurant's discretion, so we're not forcing anybody to do anything, but it gives them that option if they want to do that. And right now, service dogs are allowed anywhere because they're service dogs. So having dogs on open air patios, I think is probably a wonderful step and I know that we have restaurants in town and have had restaurants coming in who are looking at coming to Starkville and that's one of the focuses for them. So I thought this would be a good opportunity for us to take that step forward. So that's what this is about. And it's just asking the legislature to pass a local and private and there's a resolution along with that letter attached in there, so. And then the next thing we have is the, well, I don't know, do you, it's kind of a new concept, so I wasn't anticipating that would be on consent. Do you have any issues with that at this point?
Let's hold it off.
Okay. The municipal intercept, this is the local government debt collection service, this is something Lisa is better versed in than I. But this is an opportunity for us to collect the outstanding debts from courts, from water, from any debts that are owed to the city. This is an alternative way for us to collect it. And this is, this is MML driven basically, and so Lisa, do you want to add to that?
They will, basically, in a nutshell, they will attach it to any state income tax refund, any municipality that files a lien against a state taxpayers' tax refund. So there is training Tuesday, Wednesday afternoon in Chippewa that Jody Hogan, I'll be attending, on how to go about filing for that. But it's, you can, anything that's owed to the city, any kind of fees, sanitation, electric water, court.
So it gives us a chance to collect the debts that are, that are due and owing to us, so. I think this one's a very, very important piece and the legislature has set it up so that we can do that now, so. Any issues with that, on being on consent?
Yes.
No? Okay, good. Alright, board business, these are our public obligation, or public, excuse me, public improvement bonds for our park. I did? What did I skip?
Landscape.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I did skip the landscape because I accidentally put C on the wrong thing. This is, this is our maintenance contracts with the landscape for S.G.K. These are the ones we've already got in place, it's an extension of that, includes Highway 12, Russell Street and Lewisell Street and Nash Street. So the only one that's new out of that is Russell Street, so. And those contracts are in there. Chris has sent a notice that there are a couple of things in there that he needs to have changed and he made those changes and sent them to you, Lisa?
He's redlined them, we need to get them.
Redlined, okay.
We need to get a plan of the contract.
Yeah, what we'll do is just pass them that way and if S.G.K.'s good, then that's fine and if they're not, then they're not, so. Okay, any issues with those?
Let's leave that one off.
Okay. Alrighty, then, you know, we have the park bonds, so that's, this is our $25 million in bonds that are to, this is the step number two, authorization. And obviously we'll be leaving that one off, but this is that allows us to go ahead and be prepared when we need funds to build a park. These will be set for us to issue, so. We have nothing for the airport, code enforcement, these are all the buildings that we have found to be amended to public health, safety and welfare. And there are a number of, there are four on here, 202 McKinley Street, Alderman Vaughn, you should be pleased to see that one. What else? 333 Long Street, 606 Whitfield Street and then 722 Vine Street. So all of these are the declaration of being dilapidated structures amended to public health, safety and welfare in accordance with 211911. And once we do that, we can then go in and either, there are a couple of them that are burnable, the one on Vine Street is not, we're going to have to take that one into consideration to knock that one down and clean it up.
The corner of Vine Street, that Yellow House, right? I think it is, close to the road, more close to 12?
722, is that?
There's a photo of it.
Oh, there it is, yeah. That, no, that's that one in the center.
Okay.
That's the one that has, actually vines growing up in it, so it's, you know, apropos for Vine Street. But that's the one we cannot burn because it's too close to the house next to it, so we're going to have to knock it down, so. Any issue with calling, these are just all calling for a public hearing?
No issue.
Okay.
Actually, let's, let's call for that at the board meeting just in case, I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to slip something past them, so.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Alright, under planning, we've got, this is calling for the three public hearings for the adoption of the Unified Development Code, those three hearings to be held November the 12th, December the 3rd and December the 17th, which we have published and will continue to publish, so. And this is just calling for the public hearings. Any issue with those? Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay. Special event, this will be the Super Bowl and the Frostbite, Frostbite Half Marathon. And since I know this is a special event, we won't be putting that on consent, but they will be the first coming into the new year for 2020, these will be our first events. Alright, and this is consideration of the request for a final plat approval for North Star Industrial Park, which because of the lawsuit settled, we can go ahead and do what we need to do for it. So any issues with putting that one on consent? Okay. And then a final plat for Portico Subdivision, I don't think there are any issues, we can put it on consent with the, you know, they put the requirements or the suggestion for the conditions, hunt for my language, the conditions that are being approved by P and Z, so. Simon, were they, there were like eight conditions or something like that?
They put that, it was, I think, 15 conditions.
Oh, okay, lots of conditions.
But they, it wasn't just a general.
Normal stuff? Nothing outside the norm? Okay, okay. Any issue with that one? Okay.
Let's leave it in those mail.
Okay.
I don't know something.
Okay, sure. Alright, engineering is, this is for Cody's Educational Assistance Program, any issue with that one? Okay. And then claim stock it. Then we've got consideration acceptance of the September financial statements. Do we need to make a presentation on that one for any reason? Anything? Okay, do that one. And then consideration of the budget adjustments. Do you want to make a presentation on that one?
They're just the normal year ends, aligning.
Aligning things up? Okay.
I would like to go back to the September financial statements.
Okay.
The department heads, city clerk's office are to be commended. We finished the year about $5,000 off from what we budgeted.
The bottom line.
Bottom line, which is remarkable.
That's great. That's really holding a, holding a line on it.
Thank, thank everybody who participated in that.
Well done, guys. Yeah, well done. Okay, cool, well good. Alright, so we can do two and three for under finance administration. And the fire department is a, is a grant program for hazardous materials in the amount of $43,112.71, which is great. Always give as many grants as we can, so. Any issues with that one? Okay. And Mr. Parks traveling to attend the firefighter combat world challenge, any issues with him going to? Okay. HR is hiring Joe Don, Joe, Joe Don Baker. Isn't that an actor? Wasn't that an actor?
Waltzing.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, sorry. Joe Dan Baker is a lead maintenance worker for Parks and Rec. And if somebody says something, that seems to be reasonable. And then authorization to advertise for a field maintenance worker and that was due to this promotion of Mr. Baker, so. And then there's our code enforcement person, advertising for a code enforcement person, which is part of our new budget year. And then advertising for a firefighter. We had a firefighter who. We had a firefighter who, I believe, resigned this past week, so this will be advertising for another firefighter.
What reason he resigned?
I do not know, I didn't ask. I wasn't at a point where I could ask, but I'm sure that we'll be able to find out a little bit later on. Nav is not here, and the chief is not here, so. Nothing for IT, and then we have the youth jerseys for the team sports, and this is what's paid for by their.
Registration.
Registration fees, yes. So that'll be paid back. Consideration of purchasing a Dodge Charger with forfeited funds, and we are in need of some new vehicles, as we are hiring new officers, so. Any issues?
Do you know how much is left in the forfeited funds after this purchase?
After this purchase, it'll be about $4,000.
About $4,000, so it's deployed at the month.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
He was a recent person just arrived.
He did, and Nav, at some point, someone's going to ask about the firefighter who has resigned, so probably you don't want to tell us now, but if you share that with us later.
Just me.
Thank you, okay. So the Dodge Charger is good, because that is out of forfeited funds. And then we have, these are new to me, two radar signs from Econo Signs Chief, is that, or I'm sorry, Captain Ballard, is that the radar signage for the, you know, the speed signs?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Two premium.
Cool, okay. So I was hoping we would.
With a J, right?
Yeah, I was hoping we would get those soon, that's great. Wonderful, okay, cool, fun. Okay, any issues with those? Alrighty, Sanitation is the, purchasing the front end loader, and this is the one that was rolled, I believe, off of Reed Road a while back, one of our brand new ones that got rolled, so. And we need one, so any issues with making the purchase? Alright, thank you.
Insurance covered that, mine.
Yes, probably. The insurance has covered probably nine percent of this.
Alright, and then we have the utilities, lowest and best bids, and advertising for bids. Any issues with any of that? Okay. Alrighty, and that takes us to the end of our agenda, so somewhat uneventful, but, well, okay, maybe not. I thought it was, maybe not.
Got to be quick.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Anything we want to talk about before we adjourn for the weekend? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, thank you, appreciate, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, and what do you, what do you?
Do we want to schedule?
Do we want to schedule them? Oh, yes, well, we can talk about that, well, we can talk about that off of FaceTime, so. We will close out our work session, and we will discuss that here while we're sitting around. Interviews for the police chief, trying to schedule something, and we were looking at, what, November, the first meeting in November? Yeah, so the first meeting in November, any issues with that? I think everybody's, well, everybody there, as far as I know, I haven't heard of anything.
I didn't know if you wanted to note that the utility employee that passed away, his funeral's tomorrow.
Yes, it is, and I sent flowers on behalf of the city. I sent them today, but he was, Joshua.
Reed.
Thank you, Joshua Reed, yes. He, car wreck, driver was driving the wrong direction with the lights off, and he was, they were hit head on. He's been in the hospital, and I thought he was taking a turn for the better, but apparently, quite suddenly took a turn for the worse. And so he was a young man.
Between four.
Yeah, and his funeral, from Lewisville, and his funeral is tomorrow in Lewisville at the First Methodist Church, so I did send flowers on behalf of the city this morning. But anyway, yes, thank you. So if y'all will check your schedules and see if there's any reason that you think you're not going to be available for the first meeting in November, November the, I think, 5th? Okay, November the 5th, just let me know, because Nav needs to schedule it. We've got one gentleman who's coming from Louisiana, so we want to make sure that we are cognizant of his time and his travel, so. Okay, alright, cool, thank you all, appreciate it.
We'll see you.
See you on Tuesday.